Thank you all for coming tonight, this afternoon actually. We're gonna have the ceremony to give out citations to our men in blue, ladies in blue, whoever may be there. But before we do, I'd like to all you, I'll have everybody please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Shut off your cell phones, please. I'll put them on vibrate. I would like at this time to invite to the podium... Oh, I'm not that bad, son. Congressman from the great district of Revere, Malden Everett, if you come up and join me, Mr. Mayor, join me up here, please. Yep, no, we're gonna bring them up here. Folks, we're here tonight to honor our folks in blue. They are our heroes. And I'll say the first word that was said last week, words that were said last week at our interfaith ceremony, "We're Revere strong." And I believe that. We have some great folks that work for us in the Revere SWAT team, the Malden SWAT team, the Everett SWAT team, and our Transit Authority SWAT team. They did an outstanding job under terrible situation. And at this time, I'm going to call on Congressman to make, say a brief words, and then we'll give out the citations. Congressman?
Thank you, uh, yep. Thank you, Ira, so much. And we thank you, Mr. Mayor, to the City Council, and to everyone who has gathered here today on this very important occasion. We have a courageous crew of officers who are here today, who deserve the honor that we are going to give them. To Police Chief Joseph Cafarelli and all the members of the Metro North SWAT team, I want to thank you for the amazing job which you did. Your efforts to capture terror suspect number two bookended a week where we saw the best of first responders. We saw tragedy, and we saw those who were injured, we saw those who were killed, and then we saw triumph at the same time. We saw first responders moving towards the problem. We saw ordinary citizens responding in extraordinary ways. Martin Luther King said that hate cannot drive out hate, only love can drive out hate. Well, that's what we saw on Patriot's Day. We saw the love heading towards the hate, heading towards all those who had been injured, all those first responders heading right towards those people. And we saw over in Watertown and in Cambridge, we saw people in uniforms heading towards the hate, heading towards it, to drive it out. And it was a moment of tremendous triumph that has made our community enormously proud. If anyone somewhere, anywhere in America was asked a couple of weeks ago, "Where is Watertown?", they would've thought it was some kind of a water theme park somewhere in America. But now they know. They know because Massachusetts is the home to the best bunch of first responders that is imaginable, and home to a community that sides with the law and not with the terrorists. And as we all know, it was a team effort that day. And thanks to the work of the Metro North SWAT team led by Chief Cafarelli of Revere, the second Marathon bomber was captured and brought to justice. Just last week, I went over to Mount Auburn Hospital to visit with MBTA Officer Richard Donahue. It was an important day because it was the first day that he was able to keep down a meal since he had been shot. He was so happy to have enjoyed a BLT and a Dr. Pepper, clearly on the road to recovery, but that was several weeks in. And I'm happy to report that he's doing great, and he's now been moved over to the brand-new Spalding Rehab Center. And he told me that his goal is to run a mile before the end of this year. After the course of that day a few weeks ago, every single one of you showed the world what it means to serve and to protect. It was a confirmation of your courage. And I think it was a thing of beauty that the members of the Metro North SWAT team allowed the MBTA police to arrest the suspect number two at 8:30 PM on that fateful Friday night. The entire world breathed a sigh of relief, and the MBTA police were able to arrest suspect number two in the name of Richard Donahue. And now, your actions will ring through the years in this Commonwealth. The people of Massachusetts know you are on their side. This state will be safer because of the bonds created through this tragedy. When someone attacks us, attacks our way of life, that's when we come together, bigger, braver, stronger than ever before. I have never been more proud to represent the people, the police, and the public servants of Massachusetts. The entire world now knows what we have known for a very long time. We are Boston strong. We are Watertown strong. But we are also Malden strong, Everett strong, MBTA strong, and we're definitely Revere strong. And we all know that today. And we celebrate. We celebrate your incredible courage and success and the debt that we have to each and every one of you. So I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for organizing this event today. It is absolutely imperative that we honor these great heroes, and I congratulate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Congressman Markey, thank you so much for being here. I know that your schedule these days does not accommodate for a lot of these meetings, but I know how important that this event was to you and how important it is for you to be here to recognize these brave men and women we have here before us. Members of the council, thank you for allowing us this opportunity, and thank you for recognizing these brave men and women that are here. It really is a true testament to how, when people work together, how really good will always, can always overcome evil. To see the way the Transit Police, the Everett Police, the Malden Police, and the Revere Police all work together, I know you've trained together for a long, long time, never really knowing when you might have to put all this training into, into action, the way that you had to did, the way you had to do this past Patriot's Day. But, you know, that training more than came in handy when you all came together for the common good and to, and to, and to ensure that the lone terrorist that was at large was not out there to cause any more harm or any more damage to people. And it was, it was really as a, just a casual bystander that watched this all unfold on television was, was really an incredible thing to see. And really, the technology and the training that, that had to come into play to find the suspect and actually apprehend him was really incredible. And it's a real testament to the hard work that you guys do day in and day out. And it's only unfortunately at times like this that we as a community are able to recognize that hard work and acknowledge all that training and preparation that, that is there all the time, laying dormant most of the time until it's needed. But I think it's great that our public knows that you people are there, standing ready to help and to go into action whenever called. So really, as Mayor of the city of Revere, I know I speak for my counterparts, both in Everett and Malden, the Mayor of Malden, Mayor Christiansen, Mayor Di Maria over in Everett, and I know the MBTA and Rich Davy and the Governor, I'm sure, I say for all of us how proud that we all are at the job that you did. And I know that people in this state, people in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, certainly in our area, are gonna sleep better now knowing what a highly trained, effective, and efficient operation we have in the Metro North SWAT team. So on behalf of my administration, and as I say, Mayor Di Maria and Mayor Christiansen, I wanna say congratulations. And I wanna say also, congratulations to the officers that, while not part of the SWAT team, were there and assisting in other ways. It really was a true group effort, and I'm sure that you, knowing a lot of you that are on the SWAT team, you know, would be the first to say that it is a group effort, it's a joint effort, and it takes everybody's participation to make things like this happen. So I wanna also congratulate the other officers that were there in whatever capacities that they may have been to make this apprehension. So congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, what we're gonna do is we're gonna bring everybody up by groups. So I'm gonna ask first the SWAT team, the actual Revere SWAT team, come up to receive their certificate of merits. What I'm gonna do first is ask the Mayor to give out the Revere certificates. And we'll let him read the first one, and all the other ones will be the same. So if I ask, Mr. Mayor, if you can come up front and read, read the first certificate and give out the rest of them below. So they're all going to read the same. The only thing changing being the name. This is a certificate of merit, and it is the highest certificate, the highest level of recognition that the city is capable of presenting. This is an acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished and meritorious achievement and accomplishment. Special recognition is hereby accorded to, and in this case, it's Chief Joseph Cafarelli, City of Revere Police Department, in recognition of risking your life to go above and beyond the call of duty as a member of the Special Operations Unit directly involved with the intense manhunt leading to the capture of Boston Marathon bombing suspect Zokhar Zaneev on Friday night, April 19th, 2013. The certificate of merit is accorded here too. The people of Boston and surrounding communities, as well as those from all over the United States and the world affected by the Boston Marathon bombings, are forever grateful for the actions taken by the public safety officials during the day of and days following this despicable act of terrorism. In witness whereof, the certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed by the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this 20th day of May in the year of our Lord 2013 and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 236th. This was ordered by a vote of the Revere City Council, Councilors Arigo, Correggio, Janino, Guanasso, Haas, Patch, Penter, Powers, Riordan, Zambudo, and Council President Novoselfsky voting in the affirmative. It was signed by City Clerk Ashley Melnick and approved and signed by myself, Mayor Dan Rizzo. So Chief, congratulations. Officer Michael Travato. Officer Joseph Turner. Officer John Gibson. Officer Joseph Duka. Canine Officer Michael Mason, who is not here, but well deserved. Okay, guys, you wanna take, anybody wanna photo first before we release? Come on, sneak everybody up on the podium, guys. Come on, sneak up there. You guys get in the front here, you guys are recipients. Don't be afraid, don't be afraid, I won't bite. Everybody up? You missing anybody? Here we go. How's that? Cool, next group. Congratulations, guys. Go all the other way, guys. Go all the other way. Hey, Chief. And now we'd like the, all the support staff that man the, the posts, the headquarters posts who come forward as they hear their name, we'll have the Mayor read their names, call them up. Do you want me to read the certificate or is it? No, it's a certificate. Yeah, read it different. Okay, it is different. No, it is, it is different. Okay, just very briefly, I'm gonna read this. This is a certificate of commendation, and this is, this reads as follows. "In recognition of participating in the investigation that led to the capture of the Boston Marathon bombing suspect Zokhar Zaneev on Friday night, April 19th, 2013, the certificate of merit is accorded here to Detective Lynn Romboli, City of Revere Police Department. The people of Boston and surrounding communities, as well as those from all over the United States and the world affected by the Boston Marathon bombings, are forever grateful for the actions taken by the public safety officials during the day of and days following this despicable act of terrorism. In witness whereof, the certificate of commendation is gratefully bestowed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this 20th day of May in the year of our Lord 2013 and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 236th," signed by City Clerk Ashley Melnick and signed by City Council President Ira Novoselfsky. So Detective Lynn Romboli. She is in training, so she might be here. She is in training, okay. Well, congratulations to Detective Romboli. Lieutenant Kyle Roggerio, he is also, he is not here? In training. Captain James Guido. There you go. You better remember this moment. It's gonna be the last one. Detective Robin Pemba. Detective Stephen Pizzano. Did they wanna get a photo here? Yeah, one more, one more. Photo up, photo up. You guys step forward, you guys are the receiving. Get on the other end, wait a minute, get on the other end. You guys get in the middle. Okay. I'm fine. Shit, get a good one, shit. Anytime. Okay, while they're bailing out of here, I'm going to call on our SWAT team from Malden, come around to my left, and we're gonna have Congressman Markey make these presentations. So I'm going to read the names of all of those honored. There are two who are here to represent each of those who are the worthy recipients. So Officer Jack Delaney, who is not able to be here this afternoon. Officer Lawrence McGahey. Officer Scott Carroll is here. So congratulations, Scott. Officer Michael Casaleto. Officer Michael Powell. Sergeant Michael Goodwin. Sergeant Richard Corial. And finally, and he is here representing everyone, Sergeant Nicholas Cox. Anybody here from Everett? I'll give out Everett ones, okay. Right over here, get everybody on, get everybody on board, nice to see you, welcome to Revere. Welcome to Revere, guys. Anybody else? Here we go. See you, guys. Okay, this is our Everett contingent from our Metro North. Yeah, go ahead, that's right. At least they didn't bring their football team with them today. That killed that one. That killed that one. See what Everett does to Revere, all the time, on the football field, City Council. So what we're gonna do is hand out to Everett, it's the same citation that was read out, it's a certificate of merit, and again, it's the highest award that Revere can give out. This is for Officer Joe Furtado, not here. Someone will take that back for him. Canine Sergeant Steve Panzini, not here. The dogs keeping him busy. Richard Dittra Piano. Officer James Mason, not here. Officer Todd Burton. There you go, man. Good job. Matthew Cunningham. Another canine officer, Eric Rizza, not here. Hey, Anthony, do you have your dogs together with them or what? The canine team's on here. Chris Hannon. Here you go, Chris. Dan Tucker, not here. Sergeant Mark Zalinski, not here. What did you miss? Anybody, anybody got one? Not here. Not here, the ones who didn't see it, not here. Well, congratulations, guys. Head right out that way and get, whoop, photo up, photo up. Let me get over here. I don't wanna block everybody. Everett, Everett, who? Congratulations, guys. Okay, and at this time, I'm going to call up our Transit Police SWAT team, come on And joining us to make this, these presentations is our city senator, state senator, Anthony Petraselli. Over here, guys. It's only three of us here. There's three, is? All right, we got more than three. Thank you, Council President. First, let's, I wanna say on behalf of my colleagues in the Masters at Senate, my colleagues who represent the city of Revere, Speaker DeLeo, Representative Reinstein, it was great to see over the weekend Officer Richard Donahue recovering and interviewing and talking again. So please express our gratitude and hope for a speedy recovery for colleague Richard Donahue. Officer Andrew Galonsco. Officer John Valles. Officer James Davy. Officer Eric White.
Officer Eric White. Officer Sean Runn. Officer Kenny Tran. Officer Brian Howard. Officer Jeff Plammett. Nope.
You know this guy, you know this guy.
Last but not least, Officer Sorrow Thompson.
Nice job, good job, good job. Everybody here? Tennen Birds here. You guys know my cousin, buddy?
Thank you very much.
You wanna recognize from the Transit Police Deputy Chief Lenehan?
Oh, you already did. I'm gonna do it right now. This time, I know he seems like a PR guy, but I do wanna recognize the boss of this team, Lieutenant, I'm sorry, Deputy Chief Lenehan from the MBTA Police. So folks, that does it for the SWAT team and our marathon situation, and we, again, we thank everybody, everybody for their efforts, for their prayers, and their acknowledgement of those injured and those deceased during this time of tragedy. So what we're gonna do now is, we're going to call on, we had a special recognition for a group of people that saved a young boy from being mauled. And Charlie, Charlie, you wanna say a few words here on this motion, so it's?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, just say. Doing okay. Since I put the motion in, I just wanna, it's, since I put the motion in, it's, I'm glad to see the victim here doing well, Brandon Marchetti. All I wanna say is, this was a terrific performance by the, by the Revere Fire and Police Department. Officer Michael Mullen, with no fear of his own life, climbed a fence to pull the dog off, off of this young fella. He actually had to shoot the dog, and the dog did break away for a while, and, but with the good leadership of Captain Rosetti on the Revere Fire Department, with firefighter O'Hara and Marisol, he ordered them to put the hose on the, on the dog when he started to attack the boy again. That was very, very smart thinking on his part. I just wanna commend those fellows, those officers, and also call taker Lauren O'Hara for the fine job she did coordinating the whole, the whole incident. So I'll let, I'll let the Council President take over, and again, thanks, thank you.
You guys, step right up, step right up. Come on up, come on up, come on up. Ladies and gentlemen, what I wanna do is bring the young gentleman up, come here, boy, son, come here, come on up. Is that mom with him? Come on up here.
Yeah, I should read it. Where are you?
There he is, right here. Well, obviously, Brandon, we're happy to see you here with us and with mom, and we're happy to be recognizing these brave firefighters and police officers behind you. I know that must have been a real awful experience for you, but, you know, that's what these people like this do, they go out and they protect us, and hopefully you are gonna continue that road to recovery, you look great, and I know I speak for everybody, we wish you all the best, I know you're gonna be fully recovered and go on to lead a great productive life, so really, you have all our best, okay? So this is a City of Revere Certificate of Merit, an acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished and meritorious achievement and accomplishment, special recognition is hereby accorded to Officer Michael Mullen, City of Revere Police Department. In recognition of your quick thinking actions to shoot two guard dogs and scale a barbed wire fence without hesitation, risking your life and safety to ultimately save the life of Brandon Marchetti on March 21, 2013, from the unrelenting attacks of these animals, this certificate of merit is accorded here too. In witness whereof, this certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 20th day of May, in the year of our Lord 2013, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 236th, was ordered by a vote of the Revere City Council, Councilors Arigo, Correggio, Janino, Guanasso, Haas, Patch, Penta, Powers, Riordan, Zambudo, and Council President Novoselsky, voting in the affirmative, signed by our City Clerk Ashley Melnick, and it's signed by myself as well, Mayor Dan Rizzo. So congratulations, Officer Mullen. And, yeah, you wanna hand it to him? Here goes, here goes, cool. There you go. Excellent, excellent, great shot. You're gonna have him with us here. You're gonna take him with all of these guys, you're gonna take, take home shots. Now, this is for members of the Fire Department, they're all gonna read the, I believe they're all gonna read the same, so, but I'll read this one because this one holds true to the Fire Department and their contribution to helping Brandon here. This is a City of Revere Certificate of Merit, it's an acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished and meritorious achievement and accomplishment, special recognition is hereby accorded to Captain Dave Rosetti, City of Revere Fire Department. In recognition of your quick thinking and improvisational actions to utilize a fire hose to subdue the unrelenting attacks of two guard dogs, which ultimately saved the life of Brandon Marchetti on March 21, 2013, the certificate of merit is accorded here too. And it was ordered by a vote of the Revere City Council, Councilors Arigo, Correggio, Janino, Guanasso, Haas, Patch, Penta, Powers, Riordan, Zambudo, and Council President Novoselsky, voting in the affirmative, signed by our City Clerk Ashley Melnick, and myself, Mayor Dan Rizzo. So again, Brandon, if you wanna present this to Captain Rosetti. You know, he does have a hang of this, he might be up here someday, who knows? Firefighter Chris Marisol.
Not here.
Not here, okay. Can you take it for him? Okay. You wanna read that one?
Just the name.
This is going out to firefighter Michael O'Hara.
I'd also like to acknowledge Chief Cafarelli and Chief Doherty, obviously. Hey, Kevin, you did that because you're a Yankee fan. Good job, guys, thank you. Come on, go out and see the other councils. What we're gonna do now is take a five-minute recess, our session starts at 5 o'clock. Thank you, everybody, for attending.